Good evening, everyone. The time is now 5:02 PM. I would like to call to order the January 25th, 2022 Policy and Governance Committee meeting. We're on to item 1.2, which is a welcome and opening remarks. And so, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. For those of you that may not know me, my name is Rahila Emma, and I'm the elected District 5 Representative on the Prince George County Board of Education, as well as the Vice Chair for this committee. We can start our committee meeting with introductions, starting with our committee members. And we can start with Board Member McKens Murray.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Judy McKens Murray. I am appointed at large. Pleased to be here. Thank you.
Board Member Williams?
Good evening. I'm Sonya Williams. I represent District 9, the southern part of the county. And I'm also the Vice Chair of the Board of Education.
Thank you. We also have ex officio member, Board Member Miller. You're on mute, Board Member Miller.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Juanita Miller, Dr. Juanita Miller, and I'm the Chairperson for the Board of Education.
Thank you. And finally, we have a board member who is not on our committee but is a guest tonight, and will also be presenting on one item on our agenda today, and that is Board Member Boozer Strather.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Boozer Strather. I'm the District 3 Board of Education member.
Thank you. We'll move forward to introductions from board staff, starting with Mr. Cooper.
Good afternoon, everyone. Brandon Cooper, interim Board Chief of Staff.
And he's Ellis, Board Assistant.
Yeah, Barton, District Liaison. Good evening.
Thank you. And finally, we'll have introductions from members of administration, starting with Ms. Irvin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Valerie Irvin. I'm the Board Liaison to the CEO.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robin Welsh, Director of Compliance and Ethics.
And good evening, everyone. I'm Sally Robinson, Associate General Counsel.
Wonderful. Thank you, everybody, for joining today. We can swiftly move forward to item 1.3 on our agenda, which is adoption of the meeting agenda. I wanted to request that we move item 5.0 to be heard after item 2.0, so that we can save some time for our committee's guests this evening, and be able to just present and then leave at their own will. And also to move item 3.1 to be heard as the last item in that 3.0 section. So with those changes in mind, may I please have a motion to approve the January 25th, 2022 meeting agenda?
I move that we approve the January 25th meeting agenda with the correct changes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting agenda as amended. Hearing, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Also, for the record, we have Board Member Saron Ruiz, also a member of this committee that has joined us this evening. All right. We'll move forward to item 1.4, which is approval of the committee minutes. As a reminder, colleagues, we tabled the November and December minutes to allow some committee members some more time to review. So may I now have a motion to approve the November 16th, 2021, December 9th, 2021, and January 11th, 2022 meeting minutes?
I have a question. Can I ask a question first? Why the November minutes? Why are we approving those now?
We had a motion to table the minutes.
Oh, many months ago?
Last month, we tabled the November and the December minutes to be able to allow for members of this committee more time to review. So they just have not been approved yet.
Okay, no, I thought I saw three minutes. I thought I saw minutes from November the 16th, 2020. And, I mean, I was here in 2021.
It should be 2021.
Oh, thank you, because you know, I'm not going crazy here. So you're saying it's a typo, and we need to fix that someone?
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm done.
So I move to accept the November 16th, 2021, December 14th, 2021, and January 11th, 2022 meeting minutes for policy and governance.
I second that. Thank you.
Awesome. It's moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from November, December, and January for this committee. If there's any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, y'all. We are on to item 2.0, and we have three registered public comment speakers this evening. Two of them are live public comment speakers, and one is a pre-recorded video and audio. So we can move forward with the first registered public comment speaker, and that is Isabel Strauss-Riggs, an 11th grade student at Eleanor Roosevelt High School, to speak about the LGBTQIA+ policy. We'll give staff a moment to bring her in from the waiting room.
Hi. Good evening. I'm an 11th grade student at Eleanor Roosevelt High School, and I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed policy to support LGBTQIA+ students. These students are some of the most vulnerable in your schools. Transgender students in particular have one of the highest rates of suicide out of any demographic. It has been proven that having a safe space to express that part of themselves can greatly reduce those rates. I run the LGBTQ+ Club at my school, and have seen many students come to that club looking for love and support, because some amount of that was lacking in their life. Apart from home, students spend more time at school than anywhere else. You can't control what environment they have at home, but you can control the environment at school. Dead naming transgender students online or in person can drive them to suicide or self-hatred. Students who are gay or bisexual deserve to be able to date openly, just like their peers, without fear of discrimination or hate from adults they are supposed to trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. We'll move forward to our next registered public comment speaker, and that is Gina Parker, Individual, speaking about the LGBTQIA+ policy, as well as the Indigenous Peoples' Policy.
Hello. I'm actually speaking on behalf of PG Changemakers, a grassroots organization started by Hannah T. Pope and Chris Orieva that deals with racial, social, and justice issues within Prince George County. Sorry, I'm a little out of breath. I just ran to the phone. Both of these, both of these issues are so extremely important. First off, we know that we live, as people of color, we live in a society that was built on the backs of other people of color, one of those things being the land that we actually live and work on. It is important for us to acknowledge our fellow people of color, the Indigenous peoples, whose land we live and work on every day, particularly as Maryland was predominantly, and is and was, one state that was populated by Indigenous people, as was the whole country. And it's very important for us to acknowledge that in regards to this particular policy. So we are in support of that. Additionally, we are in support of the LGBTQIA+ policy in regards to welcoming schools. Prince George County is a county, and everyone here on this board, whether appointed or elected, you represent the entirety of this county. It's very important that we honor, welcome, and support members of our LGBTQ community, that students, parents, and other people can come into our schools, feel welcomed, feel supported, feel acknowledged, and feel respected. It's very important that we do that for them. They need a safe space. We know the self-harm and suicide rate for people, young people within the LGBTQ community is very high, and we don't want that for our students, because we love them, we cherish them, and we honor them, regardless of and in inclusion of how they believe, how they feel, and how they identify. So we are in support of both of these policies. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Parker. Well, colleagues, just for your awareness, the registered public comment speaker that provided a pre-recorded video or audio message is Lisa Burnham, representing Lisa for PG District 9 campaign, speaking on the LGBTQIA+ policy. And so that recording should be uploaded on Board Docs for us. With that, we will move forward to item 5.0. We're skipping forward to item 5.0, which is the Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group Report. This is coming to us because Board Member Boozer Strather had requested some time on our committee's agenda today to update the committee on the work of the Climate Change Action Focus Work Group. And so we're joined by Board Member Boozer Strather and Joseph Jakuta, and me, perhaps some other members of the Focus Work Group, to provide that update. So Ms. Boozer Strather, the floor is yours to present the update.
Thank you so much, Chair Ahmed, and greetings to all the committee members and staff, and anyone watching this evening. Great to be here. I'm Pamela Boozer Strather. I am the District 3 Board of Education member, and I'm co-chairing the Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group of the Board of Education with Joseph Jakuta, who's joined us, who is a PG CPS parent and leader of the Sierra Clubs Climate Parents Organization, network organization that is leading out to see throughout the county. I wanted to come at this stage of our work, because we are about to enter the phases where the plan is in rough draft in this coming week. And then our internal work group experts and our special guests, who've been with us throughout this process since April, will be helping to move that plan to a point for public comment. And I just wanted to make sure that all my board colleagues were aware that we are now at that stage, because this sort of feedback period will happen pretty quickly, because we do need to have the final draft ready for the March 24th meeting as a first reader. And in between now and then, we will be hosting a second student town hall and a more general open town hall to review, to review the planning, and, you know, just find final feedback at that stage before it comes to the board. And so I thought it would be a great chance, from a policy and governance perspective, to give an update, a little bit sort of how we got to where we are. We visited with the operations budget, fiscal affairs, and really focused on construction and transportation and other issues change within, you know, might be overseen by that committee. And then yesterday, we were that with academic achievement, and discussed curriculum and education outreach opportunities with that committee. So Joseph and I will focus tonight on, you know, the legislative advocacy and policy side of this. And I do want to say that our student members of this work group have been very active, and they're already advocates in the community through their school, through school, and also being invited to testify during the legislative session. And we could say a little bit more about that later, but I did want to acknowledge Jabari Woodbury for Fairmont Heights High School, Nathan Gudara from Oxon Hill High School, and Brianna Malcolm Eleanor Roosevelt High School, and our other policy elected officials who've helped us tremendously along the way, particularly Delegate Mary Layman from District 21, who serves in the Maryland House of Delegates, and Councilmember Taveris. And on the advocacy side, we've been so fortunate to have Donald Goldberg from the Climate Law and Policy Project, and Ramon Valencia Calvo from the Maryland League of Conservation Voters in Chispa, as well as Chloe Waterman, who is with the Food Equity Council and Friends of the Earth, in advocacy position. So we've had excellent guidance along the way from our internal working group. And of course, also a big shout out to Valerie Irvin, who has been our liaison to Dr. Goldson and the administration, and helping us along the way. Board Member Vice Chair Williams, who served on the work group, and to David Smith from the Board Office, who's done all of the logistical management. So I'll just pause for a moment and have Joseph give some examples of where this plan is headed in terms of advocacy and policy, and how it will be important to this committee moving forward, and how we can all work together.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Strather, and thank you, Chair Ahmed and the committee. The, obviously, the work we're doing on the Climate Action Plan is going to touch a lot of different areas. And I think you can probably hear my daughter in the background talking about screaming about how the change is going to affect her. But the, and obviously, that's going to impact the budget, it's going to impact academics, but will also impact the way policies implemented. And also, I think the Policy and Governance Committee has, can have a lot of real sway in making this more effective, because providing direction on these changes and providing a clear path for the changes that we're going to recommend would just make things clearer and help to make sure that the staff have a clear direction to follow. When it comes to the transportation, there is going to be a lot of different areas where policy is going to come into play. You know, we currently have diesel buses that are going to be operating for a good bit of time. So having, for instance, an example, might be having a stronger policy in terms of idling of those buses to reduce the amount of fuel being used currently. But then we're also going to, having policies to streamline the process of purchasing of electric buses and making sure the different ways that financing can occur will be possible, because just the time horizons on how the transportation department needs to think about these buses is going to be different than it was before. So all of this is going to provide different opportunities, and a lot of success will be based on the policies. Now, one other thing I would point out, though, is I do think that Prince George County Public Schools can be successful on their own without, but I think it'll be much more challenging to do it that way. And advocacy in Annapolis in particular, and also in Upper Marlboro with the County Council, will make this whole process a lot easier. There's a lot of strong bills that are coming up this session in particular. We don't quite know what it's called yet, but it was called Climate Solutions Now last year, and it is going to involve funding for school buses, electric school buses, going to involve greener building standards that Prince George County has already shown that they can meet through their use of geothermal. So there's opportunities to reach out to our delegation in Annapolis to say, "Look, Prince George County Public Schools is already doing this." Where we have the technical know-how, the helps with our financing, but we can use some strength from Annapolis. The County Council also plays a role as well. And some of these policies are going to intersect all of those, plus the Department of Transportation or the State Highway Administration. There's going to be a lot of intersectionality of policymaking that will come from this. But in the end, it will make sure we have healthier schools and healthier buses for our children. It will make sure we are saving the school system money in the long term, and also make sure we are doing the right thing when it comes to declining for the children's future.
Yeah, thank you so much, Joseph. And you remind me that the county's Climate Action Commission has presented their report, and Donald Bell from PG CPS served on that commission and as well as our work group. And we are aligning, we are aligning to those recommendations. And, you know, that work was sponsored by District 1 Councilmember Tom Dernoga, and we're expecting the, you know, and we have our letter of support, of course, going, you know, from the board in support of that plan. But that's critical, that alignment, that Prince George, what Joseph said about the PG CPS is ready, because this is going to be funds flowing from federal to state down to local school board districts. And the reality is districts that are, have made some steps and are more, you know, ready, are more likely to be identified. And I think we certainly, as a district that, you know, with the air pollution and urban neighborhoods of our county, the transition to electric buses is also an imperative around environmental equity. And so we'll be, you know, we're positioned for that. And really, it's our chance to guide our own delegation on the fact that PG CPS is ready, and that our delegation could actually write better legislation. And, you know, again, you know, very important that we included, you know, one of our delegates, Delegate Mary Layman, who serves, you know, does environmental legislation. And it'll just be, hopefully, you know, we'll be able to work really well together through this. And I think, as Joseph said, it crosses so many aspects of the school system and in the county priorities. So we'll just wrap up there and take any questions that you may have.
Board Member Boozer Strather and Mr. Jakuta, are there any questions from members of the committee or comments? Yes, Ms. Williams?
I just have a comment. I think, thank you for the report. It just shows a lot of collaboration among staff and students and board members, along with outsiders to the school system. And I think it's so important, especially when you speak on the federal funding that comes from, you know, federal through the state to local to us. When we had the crisis in 2008, '09, the Recovery Act, they were trying to fund products that were several ready. So if, when funds are available, they're not, the federal government is not looking for ideas to be started. They're looking for the ability to move money as quickly as possible. And us being ready to move into the implementation process is key to us getting that funding above and before anyone else. So I think this is great. It's also timely with the new Infrastructure Act that was just passed that will have, you know, electric vehicles included in that infrastructure development, and moving local, state, and municipal governments into using those types of vehicles. We're going to have to be able to, you know, be prepared for that. So you're right in talking about the buses that are, that will move, will move into electric buses when, you know, as we begin to transition that way. But we have to have the policies, or we may not need a policy. We just may need a procedure for enacting those procurement opportunities to purchase those vehicles and fade out the diesel engines. But also in how we operate the, especially the newer diesel engines, we're going to have those for a while. So when you talk about how we operate those vehicles, it's going to be important, and will make an impact, even though it's small, it may, it will make an impact when we're talking, you know, we have 1,000 bus routes. And if we're idling, you know, those buses for a while, if we do things like turn it off, and if we sort of instruct the process of using those vehicles, it will be very helpful. So I appreciate all of what you've done and how you're going to each of the committees to make the board members aware of what you have accomplished. I think I congratulate you on that and appreciate that. And so I'm looking forward to the presentation that you're going to make to us in March. I'm excited, because I think it's, we are ahead of the game when it comes to the other districts in Maryland. You know, we're always talked about being, you know, the last, but we're leading in a lot of things now. And so I appreciate you in leading this committee. I remember when you were just starting and talking about it, for us to be close to completion. It's wonderful. It should be commended. So thank you, Pamela Boozer Strathers, for your leadership.
Thank you, Board Member Williams, for your comment. We'll move forward to comment from Board Member McKens Murray.
Board Member Boozer Strathers, I won't be long, but I want to thank you for not only educating me through this committee, but also behind the scenes. You share information, and you share information throughout the community. I appreciate you for that. And Mr. Jakuta, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, but thank you. Thank you for sharing. I appreciate all of this, and I am learning. So every opportunity I have to learn and absorb some information, I am ready. So I appreciate you both. Thanks so much.
Wonderful. I see no more hands up from members of the committee, but Board Member Boozer Strather, Mr. Jakuta, it was wonderful having you here. And we look forward to seeing your final product come for the board in a couple of months.
Yeah, appreciate it. If it's all right, I'd like to stay for more of the agenda of this meeting.
Absolutely. You're more than welcome. All right, colleagues, we'll move forward or move backward to item 3.0, and we'll begin with the discussion on item 3.2. That is the draft policy on inclusive environments for LGBTQIA+ individuals. As a reminder, this policy was discussed at the December 9th, 2021 Board of Education meeting, where we voted to move it forward for public comment. And we did receive public comment on it. You can see it uploaded to Board Docs. There have been no changes to the policy based upon public comment, but this policy, along with the other policies that you'll see on the agenda for today that have come back from public comment, were actually out for longer than two weeks. We had it more out there for three or four weeks, almost pretty much a month, to be able to get as much comment as we possibly could and feedback in time to review. So at this point in time, we will be considering this policy for a vote tonight, just heads up, as well as some of the other policies that are coming back from public comment. I'll ask if board staff can please provide an overview of this particular policy for the committee.
Evening, everyone. As Board Member Ahmed summarized, this policy was initially introduced to the committee last fall, and was passed out of the committee to go for public comment from the board. I want to thank my administration colleagues, both Valerie Irvin and Robin Welsh for the work with this, but also Superboard Members Saron Ruiz and Board Member Boozer Strather, who also provided valuable feedback on this policy. We think that it incorporates the purpose of providing inclusive environment for PCPS and continuing some of the standards that have already been put in place by Dr. Goldson. Many parts of this policy are actually taken from Dr. Goldson's existing AP on this issue. And so she was far out in the front of her colleagues and pushing for this. And so we just want to bring this policy, as you mentioned, back to the board after public comment, which is posted on Board Docs, and the memorandums are posted on Board Docs as well, with the CEO's approval and support of this policy. At this moment, I will ask if my administration colleagues, Ms. Welsh, or Ms. Irvin have anything else to add?
No, just that we did, the administration appreciated the opportunity to work in cooperation with Board of Education staff and members to put together the policy, and we are very pleased with the policy and are anxious for it to move forward.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much. At this point in time, before we open up discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion. So may I please have a motion to recommend that the Policy and Governance Committee approve the draft policy, and that this policy be forwarded to the full board at the February 24th, 2022 Board Meeting as a first reader. Is there such a motion?
I move that we, as Policy Governance Committee, approve policy, draft policy, inclusive environments for LGBTQIA+ people, and move it towards the Board of Education for a vote.
Wonderful. It's been moved. Is there a second? I will second that policy. And then I see discussion. Ms. McKens Murray? You're on mute.
Okay, I was trying to second it. That's why you couldn't hear me. So that's fine. My question is, I continue to hear through the news media, school boards being sued. Now, the latest one that I've heard is that a parent sued a system in Wisconsin, is it Wisconsin or Michigan? Wisconsin, because they believe that a teacher forced a child to change their agenda. Now, I'm not saying that we can put in place something to guard us from all things. But what I'm asking, and what I have asked, is have we heard from any parents? When I look at the listing that you gave us of the people who commented, they are students, and not that I'm disregarding student opinion, but we will be sued by parents. So I was wondering, is there a way that this policy, if it goes forward, the administration can send it to maybe the PTOs, PTAs, or somebody to have some parents at least look at it?
So let me jump here real quickly, see if there's any staff that can answer Board Member McKens Murray's question on the public comment, because with the public comment, it literally just says the name of the policy and in the comment. So perhaps there was more information collected to show that there are different levels, different layers of folks that are participating in that comment, or more details about the respondents on that matter. If so, can any staff speak to that at that point in time or answer Ms. Mickens Murray's question?
So I can just provide two comments. I do believe my administration colleagues will be able to better answer your question. I will say that the form for collecting public comments does not collect, you know, age or parent versus student. And so that's something we could definitely add going forward to the public comment form to check the information. I think it could be helpful, as Nick Murray suggested. And also, secondly, as far as how it's assimilated, we did work with Dr. Goldson's Communication Department, and she did include in the newsletter to go, that goes out to all PCPS students and parents as well. So I can speak to that as far as publication. But as far as Nick Murray's specific questions regarding staff, if they could circulate it around parents, I will let Dr. Goldson's team, either Ms. Irvin or Ms. Welsh, or Ms. Robinson chime in on that.
I would have to take that back and discuss it with the CEO and see what her response to that question would be. But so far, I think you answered it very well, Mr. Cooper, that we did include this in the CEO's publication that she sends out to all parents. And I think that is a really enormous improvement in terms of how we're sharing this information to the broader community.
Any further comments, Ms. Mickens Murray? All right. We can move forward to, I see a hand up from Ms. Williams.
I'm wondering if we go far enough when we're talking inclusive environments. You know, we can make a safe space for students and staff to feel comfortable with expressing themselves in any form that they feel comfortable with. My focus on the inclusive environment is more around the student. You know, I have heard many stories about people being fearful in speaking on, speaking about how they feel and how they want to identify. I think we should include in this policy the ability to create room or the ability for students in particular, and really only students, to have the ability to express themselves within their family. Because I think that it would be, we could get in trouble similar to those that, those other school systems that are being sued in acting upon something that a student is asking us to do without being certain that the parent is aware. We have to get permission to interact with students for many things, as small as, you know, taking a picture of them in one of our, you know, advertisements, to putting them on a bus. For us to identify a student based on how they are asking us to identify them without including the parent, I think we sort of get ourselves in, we could put ourselves in a certain predicament that we may not want to do. And so I think that if we add to our policy, the creation of a space in which students and parents can come together to have a conversation, then we can not only make it comfortable within the school building, but also outside of the school. And I think that is where kids and students spend the majority of their time with their family and, you know, on the weekends and in their home. We can, I'm all for making it comfortable within the building. But I think we should take this opportunity to go a little bit broader to somehow figure out a way to create a space where students and families and their parents can come together to have these critical conversations about how this student is feeling inside. And so, you know, I think we go very far in supporting what the administration is already doing procedurally. But I think we should take this opportunity to figure out how to lead in expanding that environment so that students can feel comfortable and have the strength to say, Mom and Dad, this is how I'm feeling. Because we can do that here, but as soon as they leave and they have to put back on that that face that their family wants to see, I don't think that we're, we go far enough in supporting them. So I support where we stand here with making sure that, that the, that we are covering the procedures that administration is already doing. But maybe we should spend a little bit of time thinking about, can we do that? Even if we do it with, working with our Parent and Community Advisory Board and some of the PTAs? What, I don't know what that looks like, but I think that we, we don't go far enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Williams. One question for you, as you were speaking, I just wanted to put this here is, is what I'm hearing from you, a possible amendment request to the policy that says something underneath the CEO, the implementation responsibility that says something along the lines of the school district will be clear, or something about providing mediation services, service opportunities or options to families? Is that?
I'm looking at all of the opportunities that we have in supporting families. We have Parent and Community Advisory. We have PTAs. We have community schools. We have all of these organizations in trying to create an environment to make students whole, including their families. Let's use that to include this part. Because this is, you know, I think we do a great job in supporting students as much as we can outside of the four walls of the school. I think that let's take this opportunity to say something like, we will develop a, I don't know what you call it, a platform or program or some, I don't know what you call it, but something to say, we will sort of develop this to broaden the environment of safety for our students that want to identify differently than what the community may see them as. And so, and the reason that I say we should take the time now, because, you know, when we develop and change a policy, it won't come back up for, you know, who knows when. So I don't know what that looks like.
Okay, I think if it's amenable to you, a possible next step is board staff and administration staff to sit down with what you've proposed and see if there's any type of an amendment that can be brought to the floor for first reader, for the board, for consideration. Because I don't see anything, I don't see anything inappropriate with that request. And I actually think very many of our colleagues would be supportive of what you just mentioned here. So if that's amenable to you, we could have administration staff and board staff sit down and see what kind of an amendment can be produced to add to the policy and bring that forward for first reader as well. Okay, sounds good. I see, Ms. Welsh, your hand is up.
Thank you.
I just did want to share some information because after, it was probably the last Policy and Governance Committee, when we did discuss this policy, we did go back and talk to different departments within the school system. And so we did talk to Associate Superintendent of Student Services and asked that very question. Is there anything in place to help those students who really are afraid to go home and talk, you know, tell their parents and discuss this with their parents? And as it turns out, the professional school counselors, that's one of the things that they have been doing and working with the students to come up with an actual plan on how to communicate with their parents about this, as well as, I think we have now one hundred and forty-four mental health clinicians in the schools. And so they are also, and this is like a goal or whatever that they have set for both the clinicians and for the school professional counselors to be working with the students. And so also the mental health clinicians have also been focused on then to help to support those students because it is a very emotional time for the students. And without the parental support, it makes it even more difficult for them so that their goal is to try to help support, support them with it.
Yeah, you're naming all those people, the clinicians and everything. This just hearkens me back to the time when I was growing up, when there were girls in strict homes and they would leave, you know, with the long pants or long skirts. Soon as they got on the bus, they put on the short skirts and then they, you know, they're at school, come home and change. That's a lot of stress on a student, you know, especially those teenagers that are going through that emotional, you know, hormonal and all those changes. That's a lot for a student and can push them into a mental crisis. And I think that, you know, I think that staff, you all know all the resources that are available within the school system that can sort of expand that safety net for students. And I think that, you know, if you all can come up with something, then that would be great. I would love to hear about it, you know, before it's presented to the, to the board, just so that I can be fully aware that it's going far enough. I just want the policy to be broad enough to support our students as much as we possibly can, but also be able to be implemented, you know, in a matter that uses the resources that we already have in place to support our students. And so I don't know what all those things are, but I know that there's stuff out there. So I would welcome you all to go back and look at that.
Okay, I will say, as staff, if y'all, as you're creating this, please, you know, inform Loopin, Board Member Williams on this so that we can be sure that what comes before the board is something that is amenable and captures this essence over here. I see Board Member Mickens Murray for round two.
I want to thank my colleague, Board Member Williams, because you codified exactly, I think, what I have been attempting to say. You know, one of the things that, if you look across this country, parents are, on, parents in school districts are in an uproar because school systems are not including them or sharing information with them. And I'm not saying that we're one of those and that's what we're doing, but I'm trying to help us to not make that mistake. So I support the policy and I support it moving forward. But with the caveat that Board Member Williams has stipulated. So hopefully, before it goes before the full board, Ms. Williams' thoughts will be incorporated in some way and it will be shared with this committee prior to it going to the full board. So for that, I just thank you. And you know, the other thing too, finally, a narrative around policies would be helpful. Because if you had included in a narrative what was just shared by Ms. Welch, we may not have had to have this conversation. It's almost like we're having to pull information out rather than information being provided to us. You're already doing good things. Brag about those good things to us. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Wonderful. So as a follow up here, before we take the vote, what I, based upon what Ms. Mickens Murray has said and also Board Member Williams, what we can do is staff is going to go back, try and create some type of an amendment, can bring it forward, and I'm asking board staff to make sure that this is on the agenda for our early February committee meeting so that everyone can see it. But now we can take the vote because this is requesting it to go to our late February meeting. And so we will have time to look at it and review and add it if we need to at the early February committee meeting. So the timing works out for this. And so I will now, seeing no other hands, call for the vote. Just to repeat, the motion is to recommend that the Policy and Governance Committee approve the draft policy and that this policy be forwarded to the full board at the February twenty fourth Board Meeting as a first reader.
Chair, I mean, Alvaro, his name, his hand is up.
Yes, I see that. I will call Mr. Saron Ruiz now.
Committee Chair, and so I just wanted to take the time and thank Board Member Williams for actually bringing up this point. I think for a lot of students at home, they're welcome for whoever they are. They are encouraged to speak their truth. But we also have to acknowledge that that isn't the option for a lot of our students. And so I think for us as a system with this policy, to be able to say that we trust our students to know who they are and that we're going to accept who you are and allow you to identify who you are. But then also with this caveat, say that we want to help you prepare and help you be strong when it comes to being who you are in the real world, I think, is very powerful. So thank you, Board Member Williams, for bringing up this point, and I look forward for this policy moving forward.
Wonderful, colleagues. I think we are complete with this.
Matter of fact, Chair, I just want to make sure that in the motion that you include the, as amended by staff, I wasn't sure if I heard that part in your motion for the, for it to move forward to to the full board. I wasn't sure if that was included in the.
That was not included in the motion. That was, that's a follow up item from this conversation. That's noted for the record, and the motion maker and the seconder will have to meet, the motion maker will have to approve whatever changes that you're proposing as an amendment.
So can I make an amendment, can I make an amendment to the motion to include, as amended by staff and approved at our February, our first February committee meeting? Because right now, the motion states that we're approving what's there and we're moving that to the February twenty fourth meeting. My comment and request is that we move forward, the amended version that will include the language that we approve at the February, at our early February committee meeting.
Okay, so this is a friendly amendment request by Board Member Williams. If it's accepted by the motion maker and the seconder, then we can move forward. If it's not, then we can take a vote on the amendment to see if we can include that. So motion maker was Mr. Saron Ruiz. Which avenue would you like to take?
I think that'd be one.
Okay, wonderful. So there's a motion on the floor to recommend that the Policy and Governance Committee approve the draft policy and that this policy be forwarded to the full board at the February twenty fourth Board Meeting as a first reader. And that pending amendments from our, pending amendments that come from our February fifteenth Policy and Governance Committee meeting. Is that correct, Ms. Williams?
Close enough, yeah.
As long as board staff, y'all have that in the record, then we are okay. So the motion has been made. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. All right, we can move forward to item three point three, which is the draft policy on Indigenous Peoples' Land Acknowledgement. This policy was also brought forward to the full board and was approved at the December ninth Board Meeting for public comment. Went out for public comment for nearly a month, is coming back before us tonight. We have some public comment responses on this policy. And I will now yield the floor to board staff to provide a brief overview of the policy for the committee.
Thank you, Board Member Ma Med. As you mentioned, this policy was presented back during the November Policy and Governance Committee meeting. It is a new policy sponsored primarily by Board Member Ma Med. It is meant to acknowledge and the understanding around history of our land and Indigenous peoples. In particular, it mirrors language and legislative requirements requiring school systems to acknowledge Columbus Day. And there's been a shift in schools across the state, particularly here in Prince George's County under Dr. Goldson, to make that move on our own years ago. And this will be codifying it to make sure that we recognize it as Peoples around that time and their contributions just to our society, our community, and our county. The administration has reviewed it, General Counsel has reviewed it, and there is a letter of support from Dr. Goldson, also posted on Board Docs with agenda item. And so at this point, I will pivot to my colleagues in administration if they have any other comments regarding this policy. Ms. Welsh or Ms. Irvin?
No, just to say that we are in support of the policy.
No comment for me.
All right, wonderful. To get some discussion going, may I please have a motion to recommend that the Policy and Governance Committee approve the draft policy and that this policy be forwarded to the full board at the February twenty fourth, twenty twenty two Board Meeting as a first reader?
I move that the policy be approved to go to the full board for its February twenty fourth meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this item?
I just have one question. Just one.
Uh, we'll go Board Member Mickens-Murray and then Board Member Williams.
Okay, uh, and this, I, I think this question is for the administration. Uh, to recognize groups, uh, any groups. Uh, have we usually had policies to do that? Or have we used proclamations? Are we moving to a new a, area for recognizing groups? That's my question.
Ms. Welch, do you have an answer to that? You've been here a lot longer than I have, so you might be able to respond.
I, actually, I don't, I would have to really do a little research in looking at the policies. I do know you do a lot of proclamations. So, um, but I would have to look at the other policies to see if we specifically have uh, policies that acknowledge different groups.
Well, you know, what would be helpful for me is I don't wanna create a situation where then we're dealing with the equity of acknowledging groups and we have to create a policy all the time. I don't wanna do that. So, so that is the issue for me. That's the only issue. Uh, thank you.
All right, thank you, Board Member Mickens-Murray. Board Member Williams?
Thank you. Um, I have, I have a similar, my question is similar, but the way the introduction was done by Staff Member Cooper, um, it sort of gives the idea that we are replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. And so I, I can understand how that could be a policy if we're changing the identification of a, um, of a holiday within the school system. I can see how that would rise to a level of, um, changing a policy. But if, if we're, we are acknowledging or recognizing um, a group of people, although they, they are very important, being the first people here in, in what we call the Americas, um, that is something different. So I think we need clarification on how this pos, policy is going to be, um, implemented. Are we going to, um, codify in policy that we will no longer recognize Columbus Day and we're replacing it with Indigenous Peoples' Day? And we are going to create a curriculum or make sure our curriculum is around that? Um, or are we, I, I guess I, I need more clarification on what it is we are, we are trying to accomplish with this policy. Um, and what, and I understand there are some procedural activities in there that are sort of alluded in there. So I'm just, just really trying to understand it. And, and, uh, Ms. Welch, when she returns with her, uh, uh, what she finds from her review, we may be able to have more clarity around that. So I'm just a li, I just need to, a little bit more clarification.
Yep, I can clarify that for you. So first part is, in the Maryland, General Assembly passed laws in section 7-103 of the Maryland Education Article, which mandates that all public schools should devote at least half a day to several holidays, and one of those holidays is Columbus Day. And so that is in the state code as far as Columbus Day. What Dr. Goldson has done, the other administrations across the state have done, is that in that same vein, they wanted to devote part of a day to recognizing Indigenous Peoples. And so that was my reference to the General Assembly law that requires all school systems to devote part of a day, part of the curriculum to acknowledging Columbus Day. Um, Dr. Goldson's been doing that for Indigenous Peoples' Day prior to this policy, but you are also correct on, in this policy, um, on page two, it is stating that, um, the second Monday of October is what the US Congress has noted as Columbus Day. And this policy is stating, similar to what Dr. Goldson has done for years past, that the second Monday in October would be Indigenous Peoples' Day across the district. So that is in the policy, um, to your point about recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day, and also to the point that they will recognize it by having some type of activity, similar to how the state mandates you do that for Columbus Day. This policy will be adding that requirement as far as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And similar to the LGBT policy that we discussed earlier, um, a lot of these initiatives are already being done with Dr. Goldson. And so this is one, um, as well that she has already been at the forefront of doing, and, uh, Board Member Ahmed um, wanted to sponsor in policy to codify it. So I hope that answers your question as far as the Indigenous Peoples' Day. This would be creating, um, Indigenous Peoples' Day across the district. That's standard number two. And that is something that, um, Dr. Goldson has been doing already in the school system. And then the second part, as far as curriculum, it would add that they do recognize Indigenous Peoples, similar to how they recognize Columbus Day. So if that answers your question on that point, I hope that was the clarification.
Yeah, and, and, and it does. It, it clarifies it for me. And so, and, and maybe it's just the wording that, that sort of leaves it open for interpretation. Um, that maybe we have to play with that wording a little bit so that it's clear that this is really a replacement of, uh, Columbus Day. Because I, I just don't want us to, um, to open up the, the door to, um, there being policy changes for every type of, of group of individuals um, that, that comes before us. Um, this, to, to, to change how we recognize a national holiday, it's clear, concise, and it has, um, an outcome that is, that is intentional. To, to leave something with a little bit of room for interpretation. Um, you know, we, we may be opening ourselves up to having, um, requests made to change policies for others. And so I don't know if there's, well, I'll just leave it there, but the, I, maybe we just need a little bit more, to be a little bit more clear on the policy so that when someone picks it up and they sees this, they see this, that, that, they don't have to read the, the thousands of pages, not thousands of pages, but all the pages to understand what the intent is. And so that's just, that's just sort of my thought around it. Um, but, but I am, I can, I can definitely support this with, with just a little tweak, and I don't know what that tweak is.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Ms. Williams. I see Ms. Welch, you had your hand up. I'm assuming it's to, in reference.
Just, just as a, a recommendation, it might be a matter of just clarifying the purpose of the policy. And that might help take care of, of the issue that you're, um, you know, talking about right now.
Yes, and that, that may, that may be helpful. I, that might be all we need to do. Um, i, i, in just trying to make it clear on, on what the policy intent is. Thank you for that.
Okay, wonderful. We'll move forward to, um, Ms. Mickens-Murray.
Uh, okay, thank you. I appreciate, uh, Ms. Welch. She were reading my mind. Uh, I think it would be helpful going forward if we could have a narrative around purpose, just a little background information that will accompany the change forever in history. That would be good. Thank you so much. That's what I wanted.
Wonderful. Okay, seeing no other discussion from members of the committee, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, there's no further discussion. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're gonna, we're gonna have that, uh, that, that introduction just changed though, correct?
Yeah.
We, uh, so Ms. Welch will provide the additional information that's been requested.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. I trust that she will change the introduction that, in the appropriate way. So I'm good with that.
She will provide, um, as a follow-up item, she'll provide the information that's been requested by the committee. So the motion passes, um, and we can move forward to items, uh, the, the items that were listed for rescission. So if there's no objection from members of the committee, what I'll do is, um, uh, you know, ask administration and board staff to talk about all of the policies that have been recommended for rescission at once. Um, present those at once and we can take a vote at once unless there is a, a specific policy that is being requested by a member of the committee to be removed for a separate vote. So those, uh, policies are items 3.4, the rescission of board policy, 5119.5, adult education tuition waiver, senior citizens. Item 3.5, rescission board policy 5110, public choice, public school choice transfer option. Item 3.6, rescission board policy 5140, no child left behind. And item 3.7, rescission board policy 6157 on study habits. So these policies are recommended for rescission, either because they're outdated, they no longer apply to PGCPs, or they have no corresponding administrative procedure. And so these are policies that went out for public comment and have come back, uh, from public comment with no changes, um, and/or, um, submissions. And so I'll ask for administration to please provide an overview of the rescission requests and then see if there's any comments for board staff on this.
Do we wanna take a motion first or no? No?
No, we'll ask them. I'd like to move on to item to us first. Go ahead.
So the, all four of the policies were on, um, Dr. Goldson's work plan that she has submitted with recommendations for, uh, changes or, or deletions of policies or whatever, and these four were, for that were um, recommended to be, uh, rescinded. Um, it's a couple, two of them mainly because that these things don't exist anymore, like we don't have adult education. Um, we no longer, as far as study habits, we actually have other courses that have replaced that that are a part of the Maryland state, uh, the curriculum that they require. And two of them have to do with the fact that the, the law no longer exists, so the, the two policies don't apply to us. So we, we, um, there, you know, it's, they've been repealed, the laws have, so we don't need those policies. So that's the reason why the, they were in the work plan for, to be rescinded.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Welch. Any comments from board staff?
Don't you summarize it perfectly. And as I mentioned, all the memorandums and narratives are on board docs that explain, uh, the justification for moving these policies.
Okay, wonderful. So, uh, before we open the floor to members of the committee, may I please have a motion to recommend that policies 5119.5, 5110, 5140, and 6157 be, risk, uh, a recommendation be forwarded to rescind these policies to the Full Board of Education for first reader at the February 24th board meeting. Is there such a motion?
Although.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, uh, to forward a recommendation to rescind policies, uh, to the Board of Education. I see Ms. Williams' hand for discussion.
I just have a question of clarity. Are we saying that these are the only policies that were in the work plan for this year that appear to be needed to be rescinded, or are these all the policies that are in, that are, that we're currently, that we currently have in our policy manual that will be rescinded? So to just clarify, are these the only ones that we're pulling out for this year, or are these all that we plan to rescind?
Um, if I can answer the, there is another policy that was recommended to be rescinded, and that is the financial disclosure policy. But until the ethics policy is finalized and approved, we don't wanna rescind that financial disclosure policy. Once the ethics policy has gone through all the revisions and approval, there will be no need for that financial disclosure policy.
So, uh, but all the other policies, of all the other policies that we have in, that are written, they're still good and, and, um, active, uh, appropriate. Or, or do we still need to, I just wanted to know with just what to expect. I mean, I just see that, that the only, the five or six that we have here seems like a small amount. I think that there are quite a few that are, that might be old and need to be rescinded or something at some point.
So each year, we do review and then identify policies that should be up for rescission. So I would suspect that you'll see more each of the years because, because they are, some of them are outdated and everything. We looked at the, the ones that were the top priority to try to move out right now.
Yeah, I was like, that's a shit list. So, okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. Uh, if there's no other questions, then the motion has been made. It has been seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Okay, colleagues, we'll move back up to item 3.1, which is the draft policy, uh, 0107 on ethics regulations. We had a robust conversation at the January, January 11th, um, committee meeting about this policy and edits have been made based upon some feedback from board members as well as a few from the Office of the General Counsel. And so I wanted to offer, uh, administration staff, uh, some opportunity sometime to please review the rescissions and provide an overview of the revised draft policy as well as Mr. Cooper. But, um, whoever can start, Mr. Cooper or administration.
Um, exactly. So yes, this policy was on the last meeting agenda and we, um, tabled it to this meeting. So my question is, and I apologize, I was looking at my notes. Did you wanna go page by page through the policy and go over the edits? Or how would you like us to proceed representing, um, the track changes version of the edits? How would you like us to proceed?
I think the, uh, the best way would be whatever has not been discussed in previous meetings to address those ones. Um, and that can be from you, Mr. Cooper, or from administration, and the reasoning why.
Okay, one moment. And I think it may be easiest if I share my screen. Um, one moment. And as you know, most of the edits were, um, mandated by the model language that was provided by State Affairs Commission, and there were changes that were made either by board members offered the proposed edits or administration staff. And so I think the best way is, 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 if this is okay with you, Vice Chair Ahmed, to go through page by page, um, only because there are uh, edits throughout this document, and I'm not sure which edits board members they want further discussion on, or if there are certain pages or certain sections that board members would like discussion on. Um, but let me know which one is your preference. Other than that, I'll just go through page by page.
Sure, that's fine. We can go through, and then, uh, board members can follow up with any questions.
Perfect. There we go. And if I can share my screen. One moment. Tech difficulty, just trying to share my screen. Um. My apologies, I'm trying to pull up here a moment. Am I asked of one of my, uh, board office colleagues, either Ms. Martin or Ms. Ellis could pull up the ethics policy that's on board docs for share screen? For some reason, my side is not working. Ms. Ellis, are you able to, are you working on it? Okay, perfect. It is now allowing me to share my screen for some reason. But Ms. Ellis is working on pulling up on her side. Oh wait, and now it's working, I believe. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Took a while to come up with it. Thank you, Ms. Ellis. So we'll proceed from that standpoint. So the first page, again, as we know, um, board policy requires all policies come in seven sections. So these edits are format changes to make it so that there's a policy statement and a purpose. The definition section. And I would guess if there are questions or comments, you're going to speak up and I will stop and address them. The definitions section has been added and amended to include definitions that were sent by the State Ethics Commission's panel. One of those has to do with the designated second home. And I see Mickens Murray's hands up.
Okay, the the document that I'm looking at, it has words saying deleted. And it's not the the picture that I see that you have.
Let me see if I can get the exact same.
Yes, we need to.
Come on my Mac, so it looks, it pulls up differently. It may look different on the PC.
Ms. Welch has her hand up.
It's just out of from earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize, I can take it down.
Okay. I'm gone.
All right, I think this is.
Okay, that's it, yes.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. So, yes. Moving forward, so designated home is an addition that came from the model policy. Chief Executive Officer change of superintendent. Similar home address is mandated by the model policy. Moving forward, this language is added again to allow the model policy. And the same with the mutual fund.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Can you move a little slower?
Of course.
I'm truly trying to keep up with you.
No worries.
Okay, so I'm not concerned with the definitions because most of the things in one and two were cosmetics, right?
One moment, Mickens Murray, I, can we hold? If there's anything procedural about slowing that, I'm totally fine with that. But let's hold until.
Okay, until.
Go through the full policy changes.
Oh, you want him to go through the full policy first?
The changes that, yeah, allow staffer, staff to go through the full changes first and then we can ask.
Okay, then I would ask that that Mr. Cooper, when he says model policy, tell me where in the model policy that it dictates this. Okay, I'm good because I have the model policy here with me as well.
Understood. I unfortunately may not be able to do both on the same screen exactly where, but I can definitely write that citation to you after the meeting because I don't have both of them pulled up. It's kind of hard to.
Well, we're having a discussion now, so I would, it would be helpful if you could reference where in the model policy or someone in the administration help you.
There you go, yep. I think a little tag team effort here may be helpful. So I see Robin has model policy in front of her. And so Robin, Ms. Welsh, I ask if you can assist me as my screen is focused on this, I won't be able to look at the model policy.
That's good, thank you.
What's, yeah. Oh, you're on mute, Ms. Welsh.
So do you want to go back to, I think there was a, under definitions?
Yes, designated second home.
Second home, second home is. These are all, these are, this is related to A, correct? Yes, so designated second home, if you look in the model policy under A, Appendix A, Section Three, under definitions, it's C one and talks about what a designated second home is.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. And so we'll proceed and I'll make sure I take note of to be a little slower because we're all trying to follow. So that's the designated home, second home. The second edit would be the Chief Executive Officer, which again is just switching the language that we use here in the system. I'm not superintendent, but Chief Executive Officer. Moving down to nine, and I need Ms. Welsh's assistance here. Home address was updated to reflect the model policy.
And that's on page two of the model policy. It's A again, Appendix A, it's a G one at where they define home address.
Okay. And so moving on. We've added for purpose of financial disclosures under this policy, which I believe is just a verbiage change to make sure it's introduced that way. Okay. Moving down to the addition of mutual fund or exchange traded funds, that is from the model policy. And I asked Ms. Welsh to help provide a citation for that.
And that's on page two again, it is under I six, under the definite, oh, no, take it back. It's 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 actually L three, the interest is the definition of interest and it's number, Roman numeral six, which was added.
And so moving on to page four. Again, there were edits to change superintendent, Chief Executive Officer. And also the last destination, second home, was pulled from the model policy as well.
And that's actually on page three of the model policy. And that is R, alphabet, a letter R in the second home definition.
So those would be their revisions to definitions. Moving on to standards. No revisions other than in format changes on this first page. Moving on to page five. There were three lines that had sections that were removed or that were moved around. So the panel, members shall serve three terms. That was just in a different part of the policy was moved up. At this moment, I want to ask my colleague, Ms. Sally Robinson. She had comments regarding this section C that were recommended changes from Office General Counsel. She had comments that she wanted to write on that. So, Ms. Robinson?
Sure, thanks, thanks, Mr. Cooper. So we understand that there was some misunderstanding or lack of clarity about some of the language recommendations that had been made. So the insertion here of the board office in this section and the switching from shall to may. The General Counsel's office is fine without these insertions. So basically going back, we understand to what the current language says. So it would basically be that the Office of General Counsel for PG, PG CPS shall assist the panel in carrying out its duties. If a conflict of interest under this policy or another conflict prevents the Office of General Counsel from assisting the panel in a specific matter, then the panel shall request the board appoint other counsel to assist the panel in the matter. So we're totally fine with removing the reference to the board office in that first line.
Okay, I have one question, please.
Ms. Mickens Murray, can we allow them to continue to move forward with the entire presentation first? Because.
So you, you want me to just come walk all my question areas and come back to them?
Yes.
That's what you would prefer?
We are not open to discussion right now. So let administration staff and board staff, if you could please quickly go through the rest of the items or add a decent pace so that we can open up the floor for discussion by members of the committee.
And I'll make note here that Mickey Murray's had a question. We'll come back to that at the end. And so moving along on standards, the next change, and again, Office General Counsel suggested recommending adding in assist by the board office on this section. And that's also similar with this panel at, from the Office General Counsel will be asking for administrative support provided by the board office as well. As we're moving down. This was just a change from chapter to policy to make it more reflective that this is a policy, not a chapter of state law. So that will be all the changes on page five. Moving on to page six. This addition came from the state law. The panel shall properly transmit a copy is included in the state law.
I am trying to find that.
And that's, let's see. I think that's in the public law, not the model policy, the public law.
Oh, okay, that's why I don't see it.
Moving forward on to the next editing changes upon, again, this is also submitted by.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cooper. I saw you looking for it in the public law, but I didn't.
Yeah, I don't want y'all to be on screen. I can do that right now if you want, one moment. There you go. So it's in section subtitle four, show transmit a copy to the complainant or respondent. This is in the state law that manages ethics complaints filed on the state level. So subtitle five, section five dash four oh one complaints filing requirements, copy to the respondent, the ethics mission, so properly transmit a copy of the complaint to the respondent.
Can you define respondent? I'm sorry.
That's the person, it may already be in definitions, but that would be the person who's subject of the complaint that's filed by the by the ethics panel.
Ms. Ahmed, are we holding questions or are we asking?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask Ms. Williams, can we hold? Can we hold all questions till the end? And staff, please make your way through this policy.
Understood. So there are, it is a very extensive policy. So I do want to, to make a Murray's point, make sure it's slow and going through. But I ask just to write down the questions, write down the page number and staff will be ready to answer all your questions at the end of this presentation. Again, on the second one, number three. This regarding the investigation. And I'll ask if General Counsel, these purple edits are from General Counsel, if they would like to offer any comments on this revision.
So here, we're just trying to make sure that we're not creating a conflict so that the investigation, the investigation should not be carried out by counsel for the board or counsel for the panel. We can certainly at the panel's request, if they need specific documents, we are more than, you know, able to collect those documents at the panel's specific request. But really to prevent a conflict where, let's say, the the Office of General Counsel is doing an investigation and making recommendations to the panel, that's going to create a conflict. So again, we can certainly, upon request, collect documents, but the investigation should not be done by the General Counsel's office.
Okay, moving on to four. This edit is to, I think, believe the ethics panel chairman provided recommendation that this be revised in the policy to clarify how reports are disseminated. And so this recommendation came from the Office General Counsel as well, where they added to board chief of staff or dissemination to the board. If there's any comments off general counsel regarding that change? I think it's pretty self explanatory.
It is, yeah.
Okay. Moving down. Similar language in response to a proposal, basically clarifying that when their recommendations are coming from the ethics panel, that they're transmitted to the board chief of staff and thereby transmitted to the rest of the board. Again, this is a response to the chairman ethics panel who sent an email asking for clarification in the policy regarding how reports on the panel reach the board. Because that's why the Guinness recommendation edit came from the Office General Counsel. Similar with section seven. Lastly, without bearing repeating myself, an effort to clarify how reports make it from the ethics panel to the full board and is by way of the board chief of staff. So these are the edits for page six. Moving right along.
Skip, excuse me. I know I'm not on the committee, but can you go back, please?
Madam.
I need clarification. I didn't.
Board member Miller, we are waiting until all staff present, until staff presents all of this, this policy. And then we're going to go back to questions because there are several questions, but I don't want staff to be interrupted as they're trying to go through and present all the changes to us. So if you could hold your questions until the end, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Or, Mr. Cooper, Ms. Welsh, Ms. Robinson, please continue.
On the top of page seven, we're at the part where it states that concurrence by the board, the finding of violation by the panel is public information. This was again added by the Office General Counsel to make clarity that at the end of the day, we're also guided by the Maryland Public Information Act laws as far as was public information. So if there's anything else that wants to be added by administration staff at this point, pretty self explanatory, okay? So again, this is just to add the fact that the Maryland Public Information Act governs what can and cannot be disseminated. Moving on down, this is just a headline that was included in the model policy. I don't, just including the title of the section.
And that's on page four of the model policy, A, Appendix A. Again, it's just section five, prohibited conducts and interest.
So the rest of these edits on this page are cosmetic. Deciding changes and citing changes to sections of the policy due to renumbering. Moving on to page eight. These sections also came from the model policy. And it's just clarification regarding former lobbyists and how they can or cannot be participating in actions once they left employment or what left our employment. So again, this is from the model policy, I believe. And I asked Ms. Welsh to revise citation number or Ms. Robinson?
It is on page five of the model policy appendix A. And it's under, it's actually three and four, under F, where it talks about business entity can, and then it goes through that.
Thank you. Moving on down, again, cosmetic changes mostly down here at the bottom, again, from the model policy, just clarifying that appointed board members need to disclose financial interests to the appointing authority. So that will be for board members, either the county council, the county executive, and for elected board members, it will be disclosed on a financial form, disclosure form that they file. And this is from the model policy.
That's on page five, Appendix A, and it is under B, employment and financial interest. Two, this prohibition does not apply to, and then it's right under there.
Yes, and that'll be the last section also, which covers that the panel can opinion of the panel can offer exceptions to this part of it. And that's what the model policy is, was Welsh to state it. Moving on down. As far as post employment, this was a recommendation provided by the Office General Counsel to put the, with the one year separation, the prohibition that they cannot work for a party that was in the case that they worked for and the board. And so if there's any further comment from administration staff on this recommendation, if not, it's just a one year limiter on it, which seems self explanatory. Okay. Moving on down, use of prestige of office. These edits are coming from the model policy. It's just clarifying, and these are required by state law. Changes that happens is the last time the board revised this policy back in the early 2010s. Part of it is just clarifying what it is to mean to be precious of office and what they can and cannot do. Again, these are pulled from the model policy. Ms. Welsh, you have the citation?
Yeah, yes, it's under, it's again on page five and it's under, I just had, oh, E, press to use of prestige of office. And then all of that, most of that is picked up right from from E there.
Thank you. And for those watching publicly, the model policies provided by the State Ethics Commission and they are available on board docs under this agenda item. Moving on down to gifts, again, just a title, format change. And cosmetic changes as far as insertion of new titles and numbering. Moving on down to page twelve, again, just numbering changes. And cosmetic adding of clarification words here. Moving on down to page, well, now we're on page twelve, continuing with cosmetic changes with numbering. It's like pulling a string on a thread, one change in the whole document to change numbering. Moving on down, again, clarification of the financial disclosures. These are pulled from model policy as well. In particular, adding a penalty. Um, in particular, uh, adding a penalty for not filing the financial closures within eight days after written notice, um, the candidate would have deemed to have withdrawn the candidacy. And we did confirm this is in the public ethics law as well, in the model policy.
And in the model policy appendix A is on page seven, it's under D, candidates to be members of the board, it's number four.
Okay, thank you. Moving on down to page thirteen. Public record, um, this was amendment from off general counsel as well, to insert the panel show review financial disclosure forms. Um, and through the board office shall maintain official disclosure statements. The board office already maintains the financial disclosure statements. Um, we discussed how it's difficult for the panel, which does not have an office, to maintain confidential materials. So this is, uh, not a, it's a change to the text, but this is already the practice that the board office maintains these financial disclosure forms. Were there any other comments from administration on this section needed? Okay. Similarly, a state law change in January in 2019 added this section, which is in the model policy just to protect the addresses of individual board members, um, as their individuals' home address.
And that's on page eight of the model policy under, um, it's E, public record, number five.
There you go. Um, financial disclosures are open for public disclosure, so this section here, um, office general counsel added a line, just stating the fact that already exists that the board office can consult with our legal experts in the office general counsel uh, before releasing a financial disclosure statement. Was there any comments from administration on this sentence addition? Okay. This section, um, coming up is contents of financial disclosure, a lot of changes mandated by the model policy. And so I asked, uh, Ms. Welsh to provide the citation for this as far as financial disclosures in the model policy.
It's, um, and appendix A is on page eight, and it's under, uh, contents of statement, uh, begins with, uh, interest in real property. And then it's, um, small room and then double I, and then I think if you go to the next page, oh, and then we did have the rest of the other pieces of that in there, it was just those two additions there.
Yep, so this. Okay, so this entire section is about the contents of the financial disclosure form. And so, um, when this policy with any revisions by the committee and the board finally passes, we will need to update the financial disclosure form used, uh, by the board office to incorporate all these additions. Again, these are from the model policy over the last decades, this last policy was revised, just adding more detail to more transparency to what's reported, um, in the, in the financial disclosure forms. And again, these edits are taken from the model policy.
And again, it's on page eight, and it's under, um, interest in corporations and partnerships, and then it, all those different sections that you see, it's, um, little I to, to the double I, then A, B, it goes right down the line. Those added areas that Brandon put in there come right from, like, the addition of corporation partnership is right there, too.
Perfect. We're continuing to move on down, there's a few more pages, um, for my right here. Continue on again, this is what should be included in the financial disclosure form, just as more mandated disclosures. Again, it's been over a decade since this policy was reviewed by state commission, there's been a lot of law changes since then. Um, so these are just um, steps to increase transparency and accountability of board members.
And, and that, and that additional, uh, particular addition is under, um, uh, three of interest of business F Ts doing business with the school system report, that the, uh, A and B are from the model policy right there.
Perfect. Moving on down, um, we have gifts. This is the section that give, that regulates, um, what gifts you can and cannot receive and how to report them. Again, a lot of cosmetic changes as far as numbering. And there were a few additions, just again, reflecting other sections of the policies that have changed due to the updates. Moving on down to page seventeen. And again, this is another requirement for the model policy in regards to lobbyists. I know that one of the. Yes, so if there's citation for that, Ms. Welsh.
It's on page ten, and it's under sources of earned income, and it's like a triple I right under that section.
Perfect, thank you. Continuing on down, more cosmetic changes, just adding introductory phrase to reflect other sections of the policy and changing numbering, then down to financial disclosure for employees and appointed officials. The prior section was for board members, but there are also some high-level employees in the school system that need to be, and I don't see it reflected here, I apologize, I had staff, I thought, add three more. But there were three other positions that wanted to be added to this. So again, this section has to deal with which employees in the school system have to fill out financial disclosure forms. And there are three other positions that need to be added to this section. Um, we thought we have little on board docs, but it must have been lack time, so I've updated afterwards, but I will send you and read those three sections off now, or Ms. Welsh, if OGC has them handy.
If you, uh, give me one section, I, I want a minute, I just need to, um.
You know where it's.
I have too many pieces of paper sitting here, so excuse me for one second.
Understood.
I'm sorry, director of purchasing, purchasing operations supervisor and construction procurement supervisor.
And again, this is just clarifying three additional employees that Dr. Goldson administration has had fill out these financial disclosure forms for many years past, so they've already been filling it out, and it wasn't listed specifically in policy. They're just adding those three names of three departments in this section here.
And if I can just, um, chime into one of the other things that we're changing here, recommending to change here is to get rid of the duplication, um, is to remove, uh, reference to the executive leadership team, because we think that everybody else that's already listed here.
Right, right, thanks, Charlie.
Yeah.
Yeah. So again, this section just deals with who has to fill out financial disclosure forms. And as you mentioned, see, uh, the administration staff just wants to make sure this list of employees reflects who currently has to submit financial disclosure forms. And so it's adding the director of purchasing, purchasing operations supervisor, construction procurement supervisor, and then it's leading executive leadership. And I apologize, uh, we sent over the edits to added board docs. And similarly, just adding the language, um, that it has to be filed with the board office and oath of affirmation, which is similar to what board members have to apply with as well. Moving over to eighteen, this lobbying section, just for point of reference, is pulled from model by policy B, which is a little bit more simpler than model policy A. So the rest of these edits came from model policy A, but the general counsel for the state ethics commission advised all local boards to probably adopt the lobbying provision from model policy B, because it's easier, uh, to, to administer, but still reaches the same, um, ethics level that's required by state law. Just so you know that this is coming from the model policy B. And cosmetic changes at first. And then this clarification that's from the model policy that it will be restricted to one year. And I'll give Miss Welsh a moment, because it jumped over to model policy B. And this is under lobbying provision.
Robin, I've got it, it's, um, model template B, section six on lobbying, um, it would be paragraph C two.
Perfect.
All right, okay.
Thank you. And continuing on down. Adding a sentence here that the panel will review, ultimate registration statements, which is kinda, uh, like self-explanatory. Also, a suggestion edit from the office general counsel to add that the board office show and paying these reports as public records. Again, this is already been happening, the board office already maintains these records. It's just putting in a policy since the ethics panel does not have physical offices to clarify for the public that they can go to the board office, contact the board office to obtain these public records. Almost at the end, in the last edit. Is about exemptions, and that the board basically has flexibility to exempt employees and modify those provisions for members who are not board members. So board members, there is no flexibility, they're held to the highest standard. Uh, the model policy in, in this policy allows the board, as appropriate, to adjust standards, um, based on these reasons, when it's unreasonable evasion of privacy, and when it sometimes reduces the availability of qualified persons' public service. And so with that, um, we'll just close out, or I have one more statement to make, or Miss Welsh, you have a comment?
I do, I just wanted to also, uh, and I don't know if this is the time or not, but in the beginning part, where there are, we have, um, the amounts of money, like, for, um, like, doing business, like, under, on the definition section, under four, or I think it's five, and we have a hundred dollars. I did look up several places where the model policy does not designate amount, and you can put the amount in. I did look at other school systems policies to see what they're doing. Um, and I don't know if you wanna hear what their numbers are or not at this point. Just, it's just to have an idea of what other systems are doing right now, that we might wanna make those changes, or you might want to make those changes.
And to that point, I'll just clarify, there are some sections in the policy that put a dollar threshold for reporting. One is here, another is gifts, it says twenty-five dollars or more you have to report. When we're making revisions to this policy, I put over the dollar amounts that were in the current policy. And so it didn't change. So these, every dollar amount you see in this policy is reflected in the current original policy. And what Miss Welsh was mentioning is the fact that in the past ten years, inflation has occurred, and, um, you know, numbers have increased, other boards across the area, across the state, have different number requirements here. If the committee or the board so chooses to change any of the threshold requirements, you have flexibility to do so. But we kept the threshold requirements that were in the current policy, which dates back 2012. So that is it, I'll just, uh, caveat that with, that this is definitely one of the longest policies we have, twenty policies. Most policies we have are not required by state law. And I think that's the reason why this has been such a, a labor level over the past six months, working with administration attorneys and staff. Um, but this is one of the policies that's highly regulated, and so we just took a, a lot of, of hands on this. I just wanna thank again, uh, Ms. Wells, um, Ms. Robinson, Ms. Irvin, Dr. Goldson, um, Tammy Turner, for all their help and collaboration with me alongside with William Calhoun, who is general counsel with the state ethics commission, who's been an advisor throughout this whole process as well. So thank you, Vice Chair Ahmed, and welcome to take questions that may be present.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, thank you, Ms. Welsh, um, Ms. Robinson. At this point in time, uh, Mr. Cooper, you might wanna stop sharing your screen. Um, and, uh, before we go into the session, I wanted to see if there is any colleague that would like to make a motion to put on the floor at this time.
I would like to make a motion.
Yes, Ms. Williams.
Um. I'd like to make a motion that we table this yet again, um, because it's clear that staff and the administration staff has done a tremendous amount of work pulling this together. Um, and from my previous comments before, well, my motion is to table this.
Okay.
And I'd like to have a second.
Uh, table this until the next meeting? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, motion to table this, uh, item until the next meeting, it has been moved and seconded, and we can open the floor for discussion. So I saw first, um, Ms. Mickens Murray was making some comments, so we know Mickens Murray, Ms. Williams, and then, uh, if there's any comments from, uh, board members, Sharon Ruiz, and then any, uh, ex-official members of the, of the group. So Ms. Mickens Murray, the floor is yours for question.
Okay, I appreciate, uh, thank you, uh, Vice Chair Ahmed. And I also want to thank you, uh, Vice Chair Ahmed, for having us go through this entire policy, although I don't think that should ever be necessary, so I would, I give you that caveat, okay? Now, having done that, I am still where I was with, uh, page five, page six, and page thirteen, and what I will say about page thirteen, public record, I noticed in the, uh, model policy, they always reference when it was law. I see none of those references in the policies that, that you've given us. Uh, so that was an issue for me, but let's go back to page five. It looks to me like in the administrative section, a lot of, of, a lot of, uh, thought has gone to putting board office. And I don't quite know what that means, and then some things were changed to, uh, chair of the board. And I'm not understanding why the administrative piece had to be changed to the level that it was changed. I'm just trying to figure that out, who concentrated on administration of this policy? And where did you get the, um, I mean, I know I did not recommend these changes. So I'm trying to figure out who at the table recommend, and I, I get it that they're seeing the, uh, general counsel, but we had this discussion at the last meeting. And at the last meeting, I believe I said, it shouldn't be the board, it should be general counsel. It should be what it was in the original policy. So I'm just trying to figure out, either I'm not respected for my opinion, or somebody else believes that they know best for the board, and somebody needs to explain that to me, thank you.
I think those edits did come from the office general counsel regarding, um, cause they do the lion's share of the administrative work for the ethics panel, and so I'll let them speak to those changes if they do, or any comments they want to provide, Ms. Welsh, Ms. Robinson?
May, may I piggyback on, uh, board member Mickens, because my question is.
Not right, board member Miller, we're gonna go to board member Williams first, but I don't know if staff has completed addressing Ms. Mickens Murray's, uh, comment. So are there any further comments from staff, uh, board staff or administration staff on the points that Ms. Mickens Murray has mentioned?
Well, I, I would, um, I would just add that the changes, the, um, that we recommended where we inserted the board office, um, is just to help to clarify, which is, uh, you know, the intent of policies and APs is to make sure that there's clarity for folks. Um, and the idea that the board office, um, you know, holding on to financial statements, holding on to registration statements, so that if somebody does want to request them, they know where to go to make it easier, more transparent for the public. That was the reason to, um, make those suggested edits, is to clarify who's actually providing that support and who's, um, fulfilling that role, that's, that's why it was recommended.
And, and I would also like, could I, I'm sorry, uh, because Murray, but I want to also say, cause I know you said you felt like we weren't listening to your request to make changes, but pre, the previous version actually had that the board's counsel was gonna be the counsel who advised the, the panel and did all the work with the panel. And we did listen to that and make that change back over to the general counsel will be the counsel that works with the panel, um, advises and everything. So, a, and I'm appreciating the conversation, and I'm gonna be real with where I am today. I'm not trusting who is putting the changes in and the basis for those changes. Now, I realize that Ms. Robinson, you just came on board, so I, I do respect your input. But I will give you two, two conditions that we're dealing with right now is board. Right now, we have an interim, um, lawyer. Right now, we have an interim chief of staff. So I'm trying to figure out in my own head, if those conditions continue, who's gonna do this work? And I like to keep the work with the general counsel requesting help from the board if they need help. And that's the way it was, at least that's the way I read it in the original, I mean, in our current policy. I just saw no reason to change all of that from the original policy. And I'm still there. So I need everybody to understand that, because I've had a meeting with Brandon and Ms. Irvin. Then I've had a meeting with Ms. Ahmed and myself, and things are still convoluted, I don't get that. And I have worked in management for over thirty years, this is the first time I've had a problem like this with staff. So I don't, and, and I'm. So I don't, and I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just trying to figure it out so that this doesn't happen again.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mickens Murray. Um, we'll move forward to Ms. Williams, who is next in the queue.
Um, first, let me just say, I know that staff, both administrative and board staff, has done a lot of work in trying to update this policy. It's unfortunate that it, it has taken so long for us to, to update this policy. Um, and therefore it requires a lot of changes. And it's unfortunate that it's coming at a, at a point in time when we're having challenge, challenges um, ethically, ethically on the Board. So it's, so some of this tension comes from that. So I want to say that uh, Ms. Robinson, just so you could be sort of understand the context in which this comes under. Um, I think that the narrative that we received today regarding the, the changes that were made to that statement around the Board Office and General Counsel shall do this, that was helpful in, in trying to understand. And I think it just sort of um, puts a, a nail uh, that we, we tap the head of the nail on this issue because uh, Board Member Judy Mickens Murray has been asking for narratives around changes on policies. Um, I think every time I've been in a meeting. And so it's helpful to get that narrative. I know it, it'll add a lot of work. This one is an unusual one because of all the context that I just mentioned, and plus it's long, and we have to go back and forth. So um, I have several questions that, just by going through this line by line, and I so appreciate that, that we went through it line by line and change by change, except for that financial piece that we know is contingent upon another policy and what's happening there. But, so that is why I want to table this. But I think um, what I'm gonna do is send my comments to staff in writing so that you all will have it. And I, I just think that once it's in, once we decide on how to deal with these uh, comments that I have, we, we then have to bring this back again just for review. This policy is so important because of content and it's um, sort of collaboration with these other laws that this isn't one that we can say, oh, we reviewed it one, in one or two meetings and it should move forward. So that's why I sort of moved that forward. But my comments are gonna be around page six. Um, the, where we, we put Chief of Staff versus Board Chair. Um, page nine, where we talk about that one year um, of leaving office to be able to support um, to, you know, to, to do something for the school system that we could get paid for. Page twelve, where we talk about the candidacy. I think we need to elaborate on that a little bit more because the model policy is making sure in my mind that it's legally sufficient. I think we need to, to push this a little bit further because it's not very clear the way it's stated now about defining candidacy. And then um, also around page seventeen, that's the easy one. I think that we should not probably list the titles and just list a description. So we already have like um, senior level executives or something like that. I'm just concerned that if um, over the timeframe in which we make a revision, those titles change, that we may find ourselves in a conflict. So I think if we sort of characterize or define who has to fill out these forms, which I know the majority of them have already been doing that, that we may miss someone because they weren't listed. So I think we definitely should define or characterize them. And then this is on top of my questions um, last time around. Um, I think the only thing that's sort of outstanding is when we have board members who rent uh, property that could end up being some under, it could be uh, a financial, a contractual financial situation between our Board Member and someone who could become before the Board. So I think we have to do a little bit more clarity around that. So, but I'll put all of this in writing so that it can be sent forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And uh, before I move forward to Board Member Miller, uh, I would love if we could um, if I can make a request of all colleagues, all committee members that are on the committee to submit any of your questions or comments or requested edits in writing to administration and to board staff, just like uh, Ms. Williams is doing. Um, and I think, hope, if we could get it in within a week, like February one, February two, I think that would allow for some time to discuss, to edit, and then bring it back at our next meeting. So uh, please staff, if you could note that for the meeting um, minutes, next steps is committee members will submit questions, comments, and requested edits in writing to administration and to board staff by February one. Um, we have Board Member Miller up next.
Mine is very short now, but because uh, Board Member Williams um, cited the concern I had in reference to the uh, CEO, the Chief of Staff being substituted for uh, the Chair. And with the ethics panel, especially, I was, when I wanted to um, and ask the question, uh, the ethics, uh, the Chair of the Ethics Panel said that information from the Ethics Panel is confidential. And so when you start disseminating it to staff, to disseminate, or giving it to staff to disseminate, it no longer becomes, I mean, is no longer confidential. So uh, Sonia will address that, or I mean, Vice Chair Williams will address that piece already. So that's, that was my concern.
Okay, we'll move forward around two for Board Member Mickens Murray. You're on mute.
I'm sorry. Did the, did this policy go to the Ethics Panel for review? And if not, if no, why not? And if yes, where are the comments?
Uh, no, not to my knowledge, but if that's a wish to committee, we can send it to that's kind of review, get their comments back. It was.
I think that would be helpful. I really, really do. I think that would be so helpful. So that, if you can make that happen before the next meeting. Oh, so do we get comments back? Let me see. Thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you, Board Member Mick.
All right, okay. Seeing no other comments from members of the committee, there's a motion on the floor to table this until our February fifteenth committee meeting, and it was seconded. Um, no further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Excuse me, Board Member, Madam Chair, uh, I had to apprise the other committees that when you take votes, uh, either do a roll call or uh, have the um, call the names of the uh, members voting. I tried to tell you that earlier, but I didn't want to interrupt.
Oh, thank you, Board Member Miller. Is that in uh, parliamentary procedure? Because
Well, I.
You go ahead, Board Member Williams.
Um, that was only because I, when we, because we have been allowing board members, all board members to attend who are outside of the committee. Um, if ever we pass that threshold where we might be um, skirting the line of a quorum, then we only call on those board members who are part of the committee. Because if we take a consensus vote and we, we just say all in favor aye, it could be construed by the public that all of the members that are on there are inclusive. So um.
Uh, thank you for that context. I'll say this right now. It's being recorded. Whenever we're taking a vote, we're taking a vote considering all of the committee members that are on the committee, and those committee members currently are myself, Board Member Mickens Murray, Board Member Williams, and Board Member Seron Ruiz. Uh, although Board Member Miller is an ex officio member, uh, Board Member Mills is a non-voting ex officio member. And today, we have Board Member Boozer Struther as a guest. And so all of the votes that we're taking today are uh, in, taking the, the account of myself, Board Member Mickens Murray, Board Member Williams, and Board Member Seron Ruiz. Um, I see a hand up from Mr. Cooper.
Thank you. Notice when I underscored, you said earlier, um, comments and feedback uh, need to submit in writing. It's much easier that way. Um, we didn't receive any written comments since the last meeting, but similar how we do the budget comments, putting it in writing allows staff to go back and we'll make sure we get a response to you. Um, and I just want to make sure we understand that point. If you need me to send out a form, I can, but it's critically important to get comments in writing so that um, all the staff, all the hands, all legal experts can properly address your, your feedback.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cooper. Um, I think that would be helpful as a next step to make sure that there is a collection space for, for folks. Um, so that would be great.
Uh, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, let me offer this. Twice uh, submissions were made in writing twice. It did not make it into the document. I just want that recorded for the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will move forward now, colleagues, to our last substantial item uh, for today. And that is item five, oh, excuse me, that's item four point O. That's our legislative update. So I will yield the floor to Ms. Irvin and Mr. Cooper, who will provide legislative updates for us.
Um, thank you very much, Vice Chair Ahmed. Um, I hope that all the members of the committee um, got the document that I'm gonna be referring to on Board Docs. Um, so I just want to start by saying good evening to you all, and that this legislative report uh, will cover thirty-four bills um, that um, oh, I just lost my screen. Hold on, here we go. I'm trying, can, can you make that bigger? Because I lost my screen and it was big enough for me and my failing eyes to see it. Let me go back. Okay, so I'm going to not cover of all thirty-four of these bills, but I want to cover the ones that I think have the most impact on our school system in particular. Um, these bills, starting with last week's uh, committee meetings, um, were bill sponsor only bills, which means that these bills that we're going to be talking about tonight uh, were passed through committees in two thousand twenty-one, and many of them were voted out of the House but didn't make it uh, across the street to the Senate uh, in passage. So these bills are coming back. So I would like to start with um, bill number uh, HB zero zero one nine, which is uh, Education School Construction Pedestrian Safety Plan, Safe Walk to School Act. Um, this bill would require certain Boards of Education seeking state funds for construction of new schools or the renovation or addition to an existing school that would increase the school capacity by more than a hundred students to submit a pedestrian safety plan to the Interagency Commission on School Construction and requiring the Interagency Commission to review the pedestrian, pedestrian safety plans in consultation with the State Highway Administration. And the plan would have to address sidewalks, speed limits, appropriate signals at intersections, school zones, et cetera. The bill sponsor wants to address the uptick in pedestrian safety issues that students and families are having getting safely to and from school. That bill was heard in the Appropriations Committee last week on the eighteenth, and it's sponsored by Delegate Solomon. Let's see, I'm gonna move on to school discipline. Uh, this is a bill uh, sponsored by Delegate Washington, uh, was heard last week in Ways and Means. Uh, this bill includes recommendations from the Maryland Commission on the school to prison pipeline and restorative practices, and seeks to expand accessibility of school discipline data and lower the threshold used to identify schools that disproportionately suspend subgroups of students. It also clarifies the roles of SROs in a classroom. And the bill would make it mandatory in law that SROs cannot discipline or be involved in routine discipline in the school. Um, this bill would also require that data be disaggregated on the MSDE website. And according to the bill sponsor Delegate Washington, this would help school districts improve school discipline practices by identifying disparities in school discipline practices. Um, I want to skip that bill and go to educational interpreter certification requirements. This bill is sponsored by Delegate Chi and was heard in Ways and Means last week. Uh, this bill passed in the House last year, and this is the same version as last year's version. And this bill establishes minimum professional standards for sign language interpreters in public schools. Maryland is among a few states that have no educational sign language interpreter standards, and this bill seeks to address that. Um, the next one is HB forty-seven, is sponsored by Delegate Wilson, heard in Ways and Means last week. Um, this bill was heard in committee last year as well. The bill sponsor has expanded the bill to include all histories of marginalized groups in Maryland, including Asian Americans, Native Americans, and all other groups left out of the history of Maryland. And the bill sponsor is adamant that this bill is not a, is not a quote, critical race theory. But um, his bill seeks to expand the teaching of American history um, and development of content standards and implementation. Uh, moving on to Commission on Student Behavioral Health and Mental Health Treatment. Delegate Bagnell is the sponsor of this legislation. And this bill passed the House last year, and the bill seeks to create a commission to evaluate, update, and make recommendations to the guidelines and the blueprint for Maryland's future. And it seeks to institute a commission that would provide guidance for behavioral health services in an educational setting. The commission would evaluate the entire spectrum of care in an educational setting and make recommendations to the guidelines and the blueprint for Maryland's future. Um, a bill that is getting a lot of, of, of attention is House Bill sixty-eight, Senate Bill forty, the Interagency Commission on School Construction Systemic Renovations Projects Eligibility. Um, there's a hearing in appropriations on, next week on February first. Um, this next bill is a really interesting one for us to consider um, in terms of how it may impact our system. It's House Bill eighty-four, Crimes on School Grounds Application Sponsored by Delegate Ruth. This is another bill that passed in the House in two thousand twenty-one. The bill modifies a section of the current education code, which allows for students to be charged with a misdemeanor for certain school activities for typical, quote, I'm gonna put that in quotes, for typical adolescent's behavior like talking back, storming out of class, or refusing to follow directions. According to the bill sponsor, in Maryland, seventeen hundred students were charged under this law in two thousand nineteen, and eighty-two percent of those students charged in two thousand twenty were African-American or other students of color. Um, the bill sponsor uh, sees deep disparities in the application of the law, and the sponsor believes that this law does not belong in the education code. Um, let's see. Student attendance, HB, HB one eighteen, it's sponsored, another bill sponsored by Delegate Washington, is uh, Public School Student Attendance Excused Absences for Mental Health Needs. And the bill simply would make mental health days an excused absence. And this bill passed in Ways and Means unanimously in the two thousand twenty-one session. This is a very controversial bill, uh, Bill HB one thirty-six, Public and Non-Public Schools Seizure Action Plans, uh, also known as Brenly's Act, sponsored by Delegate Kerr, uh, heard in Ways and Means last week. This bill would require that all school personnel who interact with students be able to recognize the signs and symptoms of seizure and understand how to correctly respond. This bill would also require a one-hour online training within a timeframe set by the local school system. Uh, Mae opposes, oppose this legislation in two thousand twenty-one, but it's changed its position to support it with amendments. Mae believes that the mandate to quote, require school systems to designate at least two individuals to be able to provide first aid, which would include providing medication, including the administering of injections. Mae believes that this is a high standard of care to laypeople, and that Mae will continue to work with the bill sponsor to become, to, to come to a favorable conclusion on this legislation. Uh, the next bill is uh, one that I think if uh, Delegate Boozer Strutter is still here, it's House Bill one forty-seven, Maryland Farms and Families Fund, Maryland Food and Agricultural Resiliency Mechanism Grant Program, and Maryland Pharma School Meal Grant Pilot Program. Um, this bill was heard in Environment Transportation last week. This bill is referred to as the Farm to Food Security Package from its sponsor. This bill seeks to strategically invest in three areas. One, increasing the amount of money the state invests in SNAP, investing money into school systems so that investing money into school systems so that those who run federally reimbursed school meals can afford to buy food in those, from those meals from Maryland farmers, and investing, investing in food banks and emergency food providers to make sure that they can purchase food from local farmers. And the next one, which is also a bill sponsored by Delegate Charcutian, House Bill one fifty, Public Schools Grant Program to Reduce and Compost School Waste. This bill addresses both hunger and the environment. It creates a grant program within MSDE for half a million dollars. This would allow for funds to be allocated by the Maryland Association for Environmental and Outdoor Education. Schools would be able to apply for these funds and create student involvement and developing programs to help their schools develop composting programs to reduce food waste. I'm trying to move through these, there's a lot. House Bill one sixty-five, sponsored by Delegate Johnson, Sexual Abuse and Assault Awareness and Prevention Program, Human and Sex Trafficking, heard in Ways and Means last week. This bill is a sexual abuse and assault prevention program. The bill sponsor would like to incorporate this into health curriculum in Maryland public schools. It would require the State Board of Education and certain nonpublic schools to develop and implement a program of age-appropriate education on the awareness and prevention of sexual abuse and assault, including material relating to human and sex trafficking awareness. The bill sponsor, I listened to his testimony, also noted that children, that students are targeted mostly between the ages of twelve and fourteen specifically. Teachers would have to be trained to provide this instruction. Moving down to House Bill sixty-eight, the Interagency Commission on School Construction Systemic Renovation Projects, which is cross filed in the House as well. Senator Hester is the sponsor on the Senate side. This legislation seeks to clarify the original intent of the Bill to learn act. The bill would allow systemic renovation projects regardless of cost, even though currently the IAC only considers projects in their value, if their value is over four million dollars. Deferred Maintenance is a common problem across every jurisdiction, and this bill seeks to address the IAC's interpretation. Let's move down to, let's see, some of these haven't been heard yet. Another one, Maryland Farms and Families Fund, Senate Bill one twenty-one, sponsored by Senator Hester, has not been heard yet, but the, the bill seeks to address dual problems, according to the bill sponsor. Hunger and the environment. It seeks to create a grant program with MSDE for a half a million dollars, the same as we heard in the cross file bill. Let's see, Cyber Safety Guide and Training Course Development Implementation and Reporting, sponsored by Senator Hester's Senate Bill one sixty-two. This bill is a reintroduction from two thousand and twenty-one. It directs the State Department of Education to work with the Department of Health, develop a cyber safety guide and training course to teach children how to protect themselves online. This bill is designed to assist by helping to increase the safety of all students by providing local boards of education with access to a cyber safety guide and training course that would be distributed to each board of education for their own use, but it does not mandate the course. It would be voluntary. The course would include information and best practices, promoting responsible internet and management of cybersecurity, cyberbullying, sexting, hate speech, and graphic content dissemination of false information, and the link between social media, technology, and mental and health issues. Mae testified in support of this bill. And let's see, the three, the three bills that are listed here, Senate Bill two thirty-four, two thirty-seven, and two thirty-eight have not been heard. There has been no hearing date as of yet. And that is the end of my report. These bills will be coming back around in work sessions where the committees will have the opportunity to vote in the affirmative or not in terms of whether these bills will be moving forward.
Mr. Cooper, go ahead.
Oh, you just want to finish off the report? We do a tag team effort. Also, Vice Chair Ahmed, you asked for update on the County Executive's Task Force and also HB three fifty-five, which does the structure of the board. And so I was going to share just the notes from that on screen. One moment. So yes, as we know, on November ninth, the County Executive also books, issued an executive order that created a Board Education Task Force to study and review the duty responsibilities, powers, and composition of the Prince George's County Board of Education. The executive order required the task force to produce written recommendations no later than January fourteenth. And so during the January twelfth meeting, they did provide, they have three subcommittees, and they did caution these as being preliminary recommendations, which may change. And I'll give update on that in a second. The recommendations from the subcommittee at this point, one is recommend the increased compensation and have it adjusted annually based on cost of living, increasing board member salaries from eighteen thousand, twenty-seven thousand, increasing the board chair salary from nineteen thousand to thirty-two thousand. Recommendation that the board members be limited to two terms, recommending that board members avail themselves of all professional development opportunities, including conferences organized by NSBA, Maev, and Cube. In addition, the recommendation that board members report publicly about their professional development activity. This subcommittee also recommended that the board conduct a self-evaluation of its performance and publicly address strategies for improvement. The Subcommittee of this Task Force entitled Board Duties, Responsibilities, and Powers and School System Collaboration, recommended redefining the purpose of the county board as outlined in State Law, Education Article four dash four oh one. Their offer here was to change the language to make sure it's the highest level of academic achievement versus improve, which is the current language. They've also, number two, wanted to recommend redefining the power limits of the county board as it pertains to data management. And specifically, they're stating that the language was too vague currently. And so the recommendation is to make it so that it's clear that the board cannot contradict the CEO's powers provided in statute. Recommend defining the general duties of the county board to replace instances of equal or equality with equitable equity to make sure that students are given needs and services based on their needs. Recommended to redefine the power of the county board to establish advisory committees, in particular, making sure that there are demographic and geographic requirements for it. They want to recommend changes to removal authority. In particular, there are three counties that require the governor's input to remove a board member, and so they wanted to remove the governor's role in that area of the law. And then lastly, recommended, they looked at and examined the student board member's roles, and they recommended maintaining the current role responsibility of the student board member, and just to clarify when and how he is allowed to engage in executive sessions. And then lastly, the composition leadership structure made recommendations to change from the current hybrid structure to a fully elected board. The task force recommendation also is that the board positions, leadership positions are elected internally from the board. They've also recommended that community partners with local organizations, N W A C P, Chamber of Commerce, to have community-wide discussion regarding qualifications of board members. And then their fourth recommendation was that the role of the chair be codified in law rather than practice and discretion. These recommendations, again, were presented during the public hearing on November twelfth. They, I mean, were presented during the public meeting on December twelfth. They had a public hearing this past Wednesday or January nineteenth, when they have public comments on the recommendations. And again, these are preliminary recommendations that are coming back to the public for a meeting on February second to provide any updates on preliminary. And ultimately, they'll be issuing their formal recommendations and final recommendations to the county executive and to the public at large. So I'll wind up at you on that. As you mentioned, a request for the task force. And then two would be House Bill three five five. This one is sponsored by Joseline Pinion Melnick and also Geraldine Valentino Smith. And this is similar to HB eleven oh seven that was passed many years ago. This one is to develop a work group that would look at the operations and structure of the board. And so I know Ms. Irvin's been watching those committee meetings on it. She may provide more context on this bill in particular. But similar to HB eleven oh seven, which it cites here at the top, this is a bill that was introduced on January nineteenth, and we're looking to provide modifications to board structure. So those are two other things we wanted to add on this report. Very busy general assembly session, and we'll keep you updated as things progress. Was there any comments you want to add on three five five, Ms. Irvin?
I will just add that tomorrow, there will be a Prince George's County Education Subcommittee Meeting where this, this bill, three fifty-five, will be discussed in, in a greater detail.
Perfect. Thank you. That's our report.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I will.
I want to ask Ms. Irvin a question.
Yes, Board Member Miller, give me one moment. I'm gonna, I'm about to open the floor up for discussion. But I first wanted to ask if there are any members of the committee, voting members of the committee that wanted to have any comments at this time or questions. I see Board Member Williams.
Just wanted to say, whoo, that was a whole lot, a whole lot. I know that we're, we're definitely watching the, the IAC portion of this as it relates to the blueprint, our, our second round of the ACF, and the maintenance issue. I mean, those are, are, are really important to us so that we can implement some of the things that they're talking about with early childhood education that's coming down the pipe and things like that. I mean, we can't move some of these things forward if we don't have the space, which means we need to build the space, which means IAC and the ACF and all the other alphabet soup people have to get in line and, and work together. So I guess my question is, there are some of these bills, especially when it comes to HB twenty-three, that I think I really want to, want to dive into a little bit more deeply. And I know that it, it may come to us as a committee to vote up or down. But how do we, this is my first time on the policy committee. How do we sort of engage in the discussion process to ensure that our lobbyists are either are conveying some of our concerns? If, if we have a concern, maybe we can talk to them about it to get more clarification or to share some of our thoughts. How do we do that in this process?
I think that's a very good question, and this is my first time serving in this capacity, although I've been working in Annapolis with, with the prior, with Demetria. So one of the things that I would recommend that I'm seeing that's already happening is that people are signing up to testify. And so that, yeah, and I think it's really important for board members to testify. Also, I serve with Board Member Mickens Murray on Maev, Maev Legislative Committee, which is another really good place, as you know, Board Member Williams, that John Williams will take whatever comes from this body very seriously as he does his work lobbying. So that's two places right there. Or we can take written comments and make sure that the lobbyists, you know, move that, whatever the, the position is forward. So we're listening.
And, and I appreciate that. I, I'm just thinking in terms of, before it gets to a point of even putting something in writing or testifying in front of someone. Sometimes there needs to be more discussion for clarification and understanding from both sides, you know, there could be an approach that might just be just not clear. And so I think a conversation with who's ever up there may be helpful versus, you know, let's say, I may go up there and I may have a personal opinion about something. I don't want to go there, even if I say that I am saying this as an individual. People will always still see the head of the school board, you know. And so there, if we could figure out how there could be some discussion around, even if it's one-on-one, discussion around a topic that someone may have. And like, I may, I have some comments about that, that one in particular. And my question really is really simple. On this HB twenty-three, and we talk about how this can, can be interpreted. When you look at the data, if you look at a Prince George's County Public School, which is a majority minority school, and you look at another school that may not be a majority minority school, and you talk about infractions that impact students, of course, you're going to get a high number of majority minority schools, I mean, students that are impacted. But that doesn't mean that our, our students of color are being targeted. And so there has to be a way to sort of, in some of these laws, define how you would interpret such information based on the, the, the makeup of that school system. You know, if you go to a school system and you only have ten percent minority students, and when you look at the numbers, eighty percent of them being, you know, that might only be five students, you know, that, that, that are in that school system, but they're eighty percent of the, the infractions are going to them. That looks different from a school system that's majority minority. And we, we have those. So I, I think that those kinds of, I think tweaks in the laws need to be sort of included so that we're not looked at the same across the board, you know. And I always have challenges with legislation that is passed, and it costs us as a school system money, but there's no money associated with it, and now we need to implement it. And so those are some of the things that, that, you know, I think that I would like to sort of have a discussion around. If it gets to a point where I need to testify, sure, I'll go up and testify, as long as it is sanctioned by the entire board. I would never want to go up there as an individual and say, I'm acting as an individual because people don't see that as me acting as an individual. So I just wanted to know what is the sort of avenue that I could take in order to have a discussion so that at least someone could know my opinion and they could take it for what it's worth and move it forward or not, but at least I could have more clarity around the, the, the conversation at least.
Well, I really appreciate your comments because now is actually the perfect time to try to, to put forth some amendments with the bill sponsor. And we could arrange a Zoom meeting with the bill sponsor to talk through what your concerns are with the bill before the committee gets to a position where they're moving, when they start to move these things very quickly. So we're just, we're just beginning. So this is actually a really good time, if you would like me to reach out to the bill sponsor and maybe schedule a meeting just to have a preliminary discussion about what your concerns are about this bill before it moves forward through the committee process.
Yeah, and, and I would appreciate that, but again, I would sort of lean on the board to be okay with me, you know, doing that. I don't want to go out there and act as an individual. But, and so to talk to the bill sponsor, that's one thing. You know, maybe it's our lobbyist that I should speak to, or maybe you and I could have a conversation about it. Whatever, or you can sort of facilitate that. I mean, I just, you know, being in this position, I just don't want to be doing things that are, that could get the school system in trouble or could be interpreted as a direction from the board if it's just my own concern.
I'm following direction of the board as a board and, and of the committee, the, that we're working these bills through. So that, again, I would have to wait for direction, but as, as a lobbying team, so we're all acting as a lobbying team. So, you know, Trey Proctor and his group and me and Joe Day from our staff in, in, in the Sasser Building, we're all part of a team. So we all have to divide up the work because there's going to be a lot of it. And so again, I, I can't move without direction from the committee and from the board. So I, I wait for you to direct me where you would like me to go in this regard.
Okay, and so I'll just end with, what I just heard is, is I could talk with some of you as an individual. And then if it's necessary, then we bring it back to the board or the committee to, to move an action forward to act upon. So I, I just needed that kind of information. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm going to refer back to, to the, the chairman of the committee. If this is the way it has been done in the past. You can speak to that, Board Member Ahmed.
It's fine. I think it's been, I mean, previous It's fine, I think it's been, I mean, previously, we've had situations where a presentation was of of bills was. Presented by administration and the committee would take votes on certain bills to move that forward to the Board of Education for a vote. On a formal position, but I see no issue in individual board members speaking to. You know, what you do in communicating with staff um, and communicating with sponsors. Is on your own time, and then based upon that, if you have a recommendation for a position. That can definitely go on the committee agenda or can be discussed. Um, as the legislative update portion of our agenda is going to be pretty stagnant, will be a recurring. Um, agenda item through all of legislative sessions, so. Um, if at any time any member of this committee would like to take a position on a particular bill. Um, after having discussions with different folks or after researching on their own, this is, you know, this. Legislative update section is is the ability and the time to be able to do that, so we can move it through the process, so. I would just ask if it is something that you're looking at that's not already been presented by administration. To let administration know, let board staff know so that they can do some research and provide some additional contacts for members of the committee that may not be familiar with the bill. So yeah, I think it's fine, um, if we can move forward to Board Member Miller.
I just wanted to ask Ms. Irvin if she would send me the link for tomorrow morning's meeting. And 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 since Board Member Vice Chair Williams had those concerns, I would suggest that you take the opportunity to sit in. On the Education Committee, because then you will hear a lot of those bills come through. And the other point I wanted to make was uh, uh, in reference to uh, Board Member Williams' concern about legislation. That does not fit. The county can't designate legislation just specifically for our county. So it doesn't, you know, even though these are the state legislators, they'll get their votes for it. But it could just be something just like Prince George County, it's the only county that has term limits for the governor and for the county council. So it can work the way that way, uh, so if it's not some, if the shoe doesn't fit us, we don't necessarily have to adapt, adopt it. Thank you, Board Madam Chair.
Uh, Dr. Miller, I will send you that link as soon as I get it because they haven't sent it yet, so as soon as we get it, I'll forward it to you.
Thank you.
All right, we see no further discussion on this item, we can move forward to item six point O, which is follow ups and next steps. So the follow ups from the previous meetings should be posted to board docs upon receipt and the next steps. We've identified a number of them today throughout our conversation, and so board staff can let us know about those next steps. But part six specifically in terms of our next Policy and Governance Committee meeting, I did want to let you all know. We'll be holding that on February fifteenth, twenty twenty two at five PM. Members of the public can please check the board page on the PGCPS website for more information. Uh, with that, we'll move forward to item seven point O, closing remarks in German. Thank you all for a meeting, I apologize, we went over by hour, we covered a lot, thank you for being here and being alert throughout the entire. Meeting today, and I hope everyone has a good uh, rest of their day and rest of their week. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved?
Is there a second? Please let there be a second. To adjourn this meeting, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, hearing none, the motion passes and we are adjourned, good night, everyone.
Bye.
Bye, everyone.